Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 3, 2023. Will you please stand if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read the announcements?
The copy of Nebraska Opening Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, to discuss today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Putting options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda under one or minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on December 20, 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next are claims. Approval of the claims processed through January 3, 2023. This means to be amended to include the payroll ending December 28, 2022.
I would move that we approve the claims processed through January 3, 2023 and amend it to include payroll through December 28, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is approval of a claim to Deb Shore in the amount of $161.25.
Move approval?
Second.
Again, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Two C is approval of a claim to El Central de Los Americas in the amount of $18,543.83.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yelkum?
I'll abstain as I serve on their board.
Okay. Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Two D is approval of claim to Sean Flowerday in the amount of $228.38.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Abstain.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Next is number three, special presentations. Three A is recognition of Joe Nigro, public defender for his years of service to Lancaster County.
So we'd love to have you come forward, Joe, and this is an opportunity for you to say a few words and we want to recognize you.
Thank you. Well, it's, uh, this is going to be strange for me. I have been in the public defender's office for 39 years and it's been my honor to serve as the elected public defender for the last eight years. And I'm, uh, I'm proud of the achievements I've had as, as public defender. You know, when I was, when I was trying cases, I was pretty, pretty good at that. I won 70% of my felony jury trials and when prosecutors win 90% of the time. I, um, and, you know, did a lot of other things. I've probably done more mental health commitment hearings than any attorney in the state. And, uh, and as elected public defender, um, you know, we've added social workers. The board is really supportive of that. And I think it's hugely improved the, um, the completeness of our representation. Almost half the staff are people I've hired, made the office more diverse and, uh, and worked with the board and, and with the defense attorneys. There are nine bills that have passed in the last eight years of the legislature that contain my ideas. And, uh, and those things have all helped to make the system work better. And I do, really do appreciate the support each of you has given, um, you know, for, I know Rick has, you know, really been, talked about the importance of our social workers. Roma, you've been a huge champion for juvenile justice reform. Sean, you've been a champion for progressive causes and Krista, you've, you've been a voice for the powerless in our county. And I appreciate each of you because you've helped make things better. And, um, you know, as I said, it's, it's, it's been a great honor and I can't tell you how many times over the years clients would ask us or ask me personally, ask anybody in our office, should I, should I go hire a real lawyer? And they don't understand, not only are they getting a real lawyer, when you get our office, you're getting outstanding attorneys who specialize in criminal defense. There aren't any private law firms that have investigators and social workers on their staff. And I've gone to meetings with lots of other public defender chiefs. We really do have one of the finest public defender offices in the United States. And, and when people get our office in Lancaster County, you're getting the best representation you can get. And, and some people, you know, might think, well, why should we do that? And it's like, because how we treat the least among us says a lot about the strength of our society. And so thank you for being supportive and allowing our office to provide such outstanding representation because it, it speaks well for all of you too. So I, um, you know, as I said, I'm a little sad to be leaving you under these circumstances, but, um, you know, all of us who run for elective office understand the risks and, um, so thank you.
I want to, the commissioners want to present this, you at this clock, Joe, and thank you for your years of service. And I'm glad you reflected on some of your accomplishments because you have a lot of accomplishments to reflect on and think about all of the good that you have done for Lancaster County and for the people who live in Lancaster County. And the public defenders truly are the cream of the crop. They, they really do this for the right purpose and for the right reason. Thank you so much for all your years of service, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joe, just my two cents worth. The, the good that you've done is going to last long beyond your tenure in, tenure in office. And I just agree with Krista's remarks that how standing up for the least of these is an important part of government in general and your office in particular. So a bittersweet day by all means, but all the best to you in the next chapter, whatever, whatever that turns out to be. Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah. And Joe, I also would like to say the one thing that I remember I talked with you so much about, and that was with the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. And we were, we worked hard on that and you were very much a supporter of that. And I just want to thank you for, for that. You've made a big difference for the juvenile justice folks.
Thank you. Thank you.
You've been a voice for downtrodden people who are badly in need of defense. You can hold your head high knowing that you did yeoman's work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, um, you know, and there are other things, you know, I'm proud to have served on the pension review committee. And I was one of the advocates for increasing the pension amount for our employees and, um, and for providing index fund options in every class. And, and I think those things will help our employees. And I think as many of you know, I've been an advocate, someday the county and city should open a daycare. And, um, you know, I'm not going to say it here on the record, but I have ideas about where that location should be. And, um, but you'd be doing a lot to help serve employees and, and it could be open to the public. There's a need for daycare. And those are things besides being a public defender that I've been happy to be a part of. And, uh, and I, um, I encourage you, um, to continue to look at ways to bring down our jail population. We could make greater use of the Community Corrections Pretrial Release Program. There are a lot of people that don't need to be in jail. And it's embarrassing that 34% of our jail are people of color when only 4% of our county is. And, and we need to do better on that. And the people in jail are poor people and, um, and that's wrong. And we need to do more on mental health. And maybe the county and the city could come together and revive the Community Mental Health Center. I, I just, I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm already involved in an interfaith justice coalition that's going to work on mental health and criminal justice reform. And, uh, you know, I think you'll be hearing from them in the spring on, on those issues. And, uh, and I hope I can continue to play a role in, in working on those problems. And I know all of you care about those things. I just, I thought it was appropriate to mention them on my way out. That, uh, you know, it's important for you to keep those as priorities. Thank you.
Your voice and your experience is really important as we look at criminal justice reform and mental health initiatives. So I'm glad you're staying involved in that way.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next is recognition of Rob Ogden, County Assessor Redsford Deeds for his years of service to Lancaster County.
And Rob, we welcome you to the podium to say a few words.
I'll say very few words, but first of all, I'd like to introduce my family, my wife, my two grandsons, my son Todd, and my office family. I've loved what I've done. I'll continue to love what I do in the future. It's, uh, it's a service that I've enjoyed. Forty-two years worth of learning how to value property in different ways. And I'm proud of the staff. I'm proud of the office. And I hope that it continue at a very professional level. That's, that's all I have.
Oh, Rob, that gives me the opportunity to talk a long time. Anyway, we also, we also would like to give you this clock as a memento of your service. And thank you so very, very much for all that you have done for the county. Forty-two years is a long time. And so I don't know what your next steps are, but you know, you have a new home and, um, you maybe go on vacation a few more times or whatever. You'll certainly probably have a lot less phone calls. And anyway, but thank you for your service to Lancaster County and to the constituents. We appreciate that.
Tremendous tribute. We can't top that, but I would just say I started here four years ago and Rob and his office have always done good work for Lancaster County. We could count on getting good insight into the issues that we were facing, that they were dealing with. Very well-run team over there. Rob, I know that's a real tribute to your leadership. So great, great of you all to come this morning. And Rob, uh, thank you all the best.
Rob, you've been a servant leader of this community. Your labors have made Lancaster County better. And the whole community is thankful to you and the efforts you've made. And truthfully, there's no greater testament to the work you've done than the amazing crowd of people you have here supporting you today. So I can't, I can't top that. Thank you for what you've done.
I, I couldn't agree more. And I have appreciated what I've seen in the time that I've been on the commission as modernizations within your work, your, your practices, that sort of thing, that have really been only for the better of Lancaster County. And as I'm thinking here, as we've recognized, uh, Joe Nigro with 39 years of experience, your 42 years of experience, there's a lot of experience walking out the door this morning. And we have a, we have a lot to live up to, to fill those shoes. Thank you so much, Rob. Well, we can proceed on to the consent items.
These are two business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendments to following county contracts. C dash 21 dash 684 with Herman Miller Inc. for furniture, insulation, and related products and services. C dash 14 dash 614 with executive answering service for annual telephone answering services. C dash 22 dash 856 with Encompass Corporation doing business as Encompass for Hall of Justice Furniture. C dash 15 dash 62 with Summit Food Services LLC for annual food services for correctional facilities. C dash 18 dash 74 with Voss Electric Company doing business as Voss Lighting for light bulbs, ballast, and retrofit kits. Amendment to grant contract C dash 22 dash 319 with Nebraska State Bar Association Project to assist in Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Right away contracts with the following. Kathy L. Heat Dirks Revocable Trust, South 148th Street and Firth Road in the amount of $845. Randall Camp Miller Revocable Living Trust, South 148th Street and Firth Road in the amount of $1,108. City of Lincoln, Nebraska, Immunity Corporation doing business as Lincoln Electric System, North 84th Street and Bluff Road in the amount of $5,033.18.
Move approval of the consent items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no further discussion. Please read the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public hearing. This is county text amendment number 22014. To amend Articles Four, Nineteen, Thirteen, and Eighteen of the Lancaster County Zoning Regulations and Section Four dash Seven of the Lancaster County Subdivision Regulations.
We'll now open the public hearing.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Steve Hendrickson with Lincoln Lancaster County Plan Department, 555 South 10th Street. A pretty straightforward text amendment. We add three condition, uh, conditions to three types of special permits and then six other little cleanup text amendments that we had. Gave you a previous briefing to go into some of the details, but just here if you had any additional questions.
I would just say, Steve, just to clarify, these are all related to potential spec- special permit applications that may come.
Correct. That way, for these particular ones and regarding industrial uses or chemical use, uh, we worked with the Health Department to establish conditions in, uh, in case at some point some come, someone comes forward to have this type of use in Lancaster County.
And the benefit of this is that now anyone who might be wishing to engage in these types of businesses or activities, they've got the foundation of what-
Right. They have some conditions to start with that they can know the need to meet.
Yeah, yeah. Very good.
Definitely better to be proactive in this way and anticipate what those might be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. Thank you.
Next is number six, new business. Six A is a resolution, a matter of county text amendment number 22014 to add conditions to special permits, namely 13 dash 022 Industrial, 13 dash 029 Facilities for the commercial storage or sale of fertilizer or toxic flammable agricultural chemicals, and 13 dash 034 non-commercial distillation and storage of ethanol and biodiesel.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no further discussion. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is a special event permitted application from Scott Wise Camp for the 2023 Animal Run Event to be held on February 4, 2023.
Let's see anyone here to speak on this issue.
Yeah, I was so hoping Scott would come, uh, give us the highlights of the animal run. But it looks like all the appropriate paperwork's included here.
Yeah. It looks like a lot of fun.
If you, if you can do five miles, it'd be a ball, I think. So I, I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is an exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17 dash 9, Bracket B for Crystal Floyd, clerk of the District Court, in the amount of $500.
Again, we have no one here to speak on this issue. And we have a, a little letter to read. Would you mind reading that into the record, Mr. Clerk?
Pursuant to Lancaster County Personnel Rule 17 dash 9, Bracket B, I'm requesting an exceptional circumstance award in the amount of $500 for Crystal Floyd, Court Services Supervisor. When my civil division supervisor retired earlier this year, I combined my civil and criminal divisions into one court services division and appointed Crystal Floyd, the criminal division supervisor, to the position of Court Services Supervisor. Although Crystal had been in the civil division previously, she had never supervised it. So she had to not only relearn the civil side of the court services, but had to learn to be a supervisor of an expanded group of people and mold two teams into one new one. Crystal has risen to the challenge and brought more skill, training, and cohesion to her team than we could ever have hoped for. With the current job market and frequency of people switching, switching jobs, Crystal had multiple turnovers in her division in her first few months. However, she trained new staff in both criminal and civil process in addition to teaching former criminal or civil specialists in other duties so they could become fully functional, one-stop shop. Customer service had, has improved greatly now that we have a single court services department where an uncertain public can come for polite, competent, and easy assistance. Crystal has sacrificed her vacation days to cover open spots and in between and during training of new staff. She has also worked late in the evenings and on weekends to make sure the day-to-day work in her division was still completed while short-staffed. Crystal's humor and quick wit have created a comfortable camaraderie with her team and the rest of the office to create a pleasant atmosphere, one in which people want to come to work. She asks for help when needed and utilizes the experience of other supervisors in the office when she has a problem to solve. Crystal Floyd has changed the face of our front line. Her leadership, caring, attention to detail, and dedication to training and integrity has turned her newly expanded, newly hired team into a cohesive, cohesive unit. Her dedication to our office and to Lancaster County is exceptional. And this award will confirm our support and gratitude for all her past and continued efforts. Thank you for your consideration. Uh, Troy, clerk of the District Court.
I, it sounds like a very well-deserved honor and, uh, good of Troy and Chuck to recognize Crystal's efforts. I will move we approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Um, yeah, it's unfortunate that she was not able to be here, but certainly, uh, sounds like she's doing good work there. Go ahead and read the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is a resolution, a matter of county text amendment, amendment number 22014 to add conditions to special permits, namely 13 dash 022 Industrial, 13 dash 029 Facilities for the commercial storage and sale of fertilizer or toxic flammable agricultural chemicals, and 13 dash 034 non-commercial distillation and storage of ethanol and biodiesel.
I'm not, I'm lost here. I have a difference, something different for Resolution D.
That was six A, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're on six D.
Well, it's on, I've got it on D as online.
I have a resolution accepting maintenance for certain roads.
Well, here's, that's on E.
That's E.
D is, uh-
The resolution accepting maintenance responsibilities for certain roads.
Interesting. Yeah, that's, that was A.
Well, I've got it twice. I had it A and-
This is the first time I've ever seen this happen. It's usually so efficient and so-
Okay, we'll try again here. D is a resolution in accepting maintenance responsibilities for certain roads and streets located within South Ridge Acres addition.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request for Lancaster County to take over maintenance for South Ridge Acres. Um, it's a little addition, not really a little, 31 lots. Uh, it's located just east of the village of Roca. It's along Roca Road and approximately South, um, 82nd Street. It contains about 7,500 feet of asphalt roads, so basically a mile and a half. This is a roadway that's in good shape now. Um, they have met all of our requirements for Lancaster County to take over maintenance of this addition.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Happy New Year, Commissioners. Uh, once again, I would like to remind the Commissioners, as we continue to accept maintenance, um, and over a mile is significant maintenance for, for the county engineer's office, we have no funding source to continue to accept maintenance for these acreage roads. And we now maintain, um, nearly 3,000 residential acreage lots, more than, uh, any county maintains in the state of Nebraska.
Appreciate you pointing that out. And I believe it's been a subject of discussion. Um, at this point, my understanding is the way these agreements are made, we've kind of committed ourselves to accepting these once they meet our standards. Is that, is that accurate, Pam?
Commissioners, you really have no way not to accept it. However, I feel as county engineer that it is my job to continue to step forward and say, this is a problem. And we need to come together and come up with a solution.
That's the right thing to do. It's, it's, how much is, I mean, how much is it going to cost us annually for a new mile? What do you think? Can you ballpark it? Rough estimate?
I mean, if we were to say, it, it, you know, it's an interesting thing. So if we're to say new mile or, um, or overlay, you know, if we're to say overlay, we're probably in the 600,000 to 800,000, uh, zone. We know we'll have to overlay it in, in the 10 to 20 years. Uh, the other thing, Commissioner Flowerday, that remains a continuing concern of mine is snow removal. And then, you know, we're, we're also sealing these roads. We're crack sealing them. We're repairing pop-
I agree with all that, I understand it. I will move approval based on the existing agreements that are in place.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a resolution, a matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County, which have been, which have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a resolution, a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign a program agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation for setting out the various duties and finding responsibilities for the federal aid project on North one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, okay, this one's a little happier topic. Actually, this item and the item that precedes it, because remember, we always have the item to authorize, signature, and then the actual program agreement. I'm going to kind of double-use my exhibits today, and so this does say Southwest Fourteenth Street at the top of the overhead, however, Elvo to Ashland is actually an eleven-mile project. And the thing that is super-excited about this highway safety program project is that we went ahead and put in for a new program that the state of Nebraska has for roads that are eleven-foot lane width and more than a thousand cars a day. And just for perspective, when we worked on widening the lanes for Saltillo and South Sixty-eighth Street, that process with traffic studies and meetings took us about three years to secure funding for. With the new process, we put in for this grant at ten o'clock in the morning, and by noon, we had approval, and that is success in government. And so what we're going to look at here is eleven miles of improvements of widening this road. This road is like many others in Lancaster County that we have worked on, it is, it's narrow, it doesn't have a big recovery area with that eleven-foot lane, and then in addition to that, it's a farm-to-market route, it is also a school route for Raymond Central, and it's really important for northern Lancaster County, so I'm excited to bring this project forward today. It is currently estimated at over twelve million dollars. This will bring the number of projects that we have in Lancaster County that are currently over ten million dollars to five. And so that's significant because, you know, Saltillo was our first project that crossed the ten-million-dollar mark, so exciting times for us in Lancaster County.
When will you begin on this?
We have already begun on this, you know, we're doing the scoping and design. The thing, Commissioner Amundson, about these federal aid projects is, we do have to work not only with NDOT, but with the Federal Highway Administration. They do, on average, take two to three years to get through the system. And so I would expect that we're two to three years out on actually turning any dirt on this project, but nevertheless, we're two to three years out, which is significant because with Saltillo and South Sixty-eighth Street, it took us three years just to get to this point, so I'm super-excited, and hopeful to bring more of these to you in the future.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please read the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is a program agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation for highway safety improvement and service transportation block grant funds for the shoulder widening of North Fourteenth Street from Alvo Road to Ashland Road. The total cost of project is estimated to be twelve million, seventy-six thousand two hundred dollars. The estimated Lancaster County share is two million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Move approval?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is a memorandum of understanding with Wellbeing Initiative, Inc., for the provision of one-on-one peer support and recovery groups at the Lancaster County Jail, there is no cost to the county.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brenda Fisher, Programs Director with Lancaster County's Jail. I'm just here to give a little insight, I was contacted probably about three months ago by Ann Ronkey, who's currently employed with Wellbeing Initiative. They are, at present, grant-funded to be able to reach in to correctional facilities to provide what they call peer navigators, which is essentially a peer support individual placed inside the jail. What we have discussed is the placement of this peer support person two days a week to provide individual peer support for inmates within the county jail, as well as the provision of either smart recovery and/or wellness recovery action plan programs. And we're still kind of fine-tuning where we want those programs to take place, but the initial idea is that this would be an opportunity to expand some of those services beyond the more intensive programming we currently have onboard for a select number of men and women who are involved in the Mister and the Wiser programs. So this is a way to sort of expand some of those similar services out to other areas of the jail. For the duration of this year, at least, there would be no cost to the county as reflected in the MOU. Whether that would continue to be the case, or whether there would need to be a negotiation if we wanted that to continue, probably hinges on what their funding stream is going to look like, so, but we felt it was an opportunity worth engaging with for the benefit of the inmate population, because we have no shortage of customers who can benefit from programs of this nature.
Sadly so.
Yeah, we appreciate, you know, adding another tool or another opportunity for folks who are trying to get backheaded in the right direction. I'm always curious, do we have any, do we get feedback from the people who use the program? Do we ever do anything like that, just to see how it's impacting them?
As far as follow-up once they leave custody?
Or even during the process?
Even during, we do get some feedback, particularly when individuals complete Mister or Wiser at their graduation ceremony, we often have them comment about what they've learned and the benefits that they believe they have acquired by participation in the program. Once in a while, we do hear from people after they leave custody, and that's always encouraging and gratifying, because if we've established enough of a rapport where people feel comfortable calling in to say, hey, I remember you guys mentioning this particular resource, but I can't remember the name of the agency, or I can't remember how to get ahold of them, that's always nice, because we are then able to continue working with people to try to get them in touch with resources in our community that will hopefully prevent them from coming back through the doors.
I don't think there's any more important work going on in our county than what you all are doing with these folks, and I'm glad to move approval of this program.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Six I is an interlocal agreement with Lancaster County School District One-Forty-Eight for the provision of a school resource officer by the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. The school agrees to pay the county twenty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-three cents for the first year of the contract, with a three percent increase each contract year thereafter.
Good morning, happy new year, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. This interlocal agreement, Malcolm and Raymond share a deputy, so this obviously is not the entire cost of an employee, it's one-half of their share of a school resource officer. So, yeah, I'm not real sure why this didn't get on in August when the contract, I don't, I think it fell somehow because of the sharing of the deputy, I think Raymond Central approved theirs and this didn't get approved, so it comes before you now, and it lasts for a couple of years.
Good morning, John Ward with the County Attorney's Office. Just brief clarification on Sheriff Wagner's comments, the reason why this didn't get approved is because the contract said Malcolm High School specifically, we wanted to serve Malcolm Schools as a whole, so a school board member took offense at that.
Okay.
That's a good clarification and a good practice to serve the entire school.
Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah, because they do.
Right, yeah.
John, you're not here just for your good looks.
No.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. J is an agreement with Dave Shively for professional election consulting services, the cost of county does not exceed ten thousand dollars.
As I understand it, this item is to, that Dave has agreed to be available as a consultant for whoever the person appointed to replace him is, years of experience and integrity involved here, so we're honored to have him available if the new election commissioner should decide to consult with him, so.
We're lucky to have this as an option, he's a real resource.
Absolutely, I move approval.
I'll second that, yep.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is an agreement with J Photography for individual headshots of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office sworn employees, and on as-needed basis for new employees. The cost to county is forty dollars per headshot, the total cost should not exceed one thousand dollars.
Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff, this is, we take photographs of every one of our employees, so their ID cards and those kinds of things, and so this is a contract with J Photography to do that on an as-needed basis.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Six L is a recommendation from the county engineer toward a bid to Constructors, Inc., for Southwest Fourteenth Street paving, estimated cost to county is one million, seven hundred ninety-five dollars, excuse me, one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this is the contract for paving the two miles that will connect really northern, or, you know, I'm going to say southwestern, maybe to more southwestern. We have this two miles in the middle of the system that is not paved, from Roca Road to Bennett Road. Over the years, in the one and six, we've had people come forward and say, why is this? How did it happen? We now know that traffic count on this road is, in some cases, well over four hundred, reaching as much as six hundred cars a day. That is way too many, way too many, way too high of a count for a gravel road, so we're bringing this road forward. It is, our engineering estimate for this was one-point-six million dollars, and so we continue to see construction inflation with our bids.
Well, it'd be nice to get that one begun, so would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. M is revised recommendation from the Pension Review Committee, fund lineup changes due to fee leveling.
This is essentially to clean up, let Dave describe that.
Commissioners, I presented a recommendation from the Pension Review Committee on December eighth, when we were moving to implement that recommendation, we discovered that there were two zero-dollar frozen funds that also technically were included in our fund lineup that were not included in that recommendation, they were not included in the evaluation because there's really no economic impact to any of our participants or to the county. But technically, in order to remove the revenue sharing from those, in order to sign off on the document I received from Prudential, I need to include those in the recommendation, and that's why this is before you today.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number seven, public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business on the agenda may do so this time.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak? Seeing none, we may proceed.
Next is announcements, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at eight fifteen, in Room One-twelve of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, beginning at nine AM, in Room One-twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV. Link TV is available on Allo Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln dot NE dot gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link, live on YouTube and Facebook. Link TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV.
Move we adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
We can move directly into the Board of Equalization Meeting then, for Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, January third.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff, printing options are available on request, and material can also be viewed on the county's website at Lancaster dot NE dot gov. Agenda in one hour minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting held on Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is a public hearing, this is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, this includes Union College, Nebraska Wesleyan University, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Saint Paul's Lutheran Church, Alon Chapel SDA Church, Goodwill Industries Serving Southeast Nebraska, Inc., Saint Joseph Catholic Church and School, CHI Health, Saint Elizabeth, People City Mission, and F Street Neighborhood Church.
We'll now open the public hearing on these motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these? Seeing none, we can close the hearing.
Next is number three, action on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, non-agenda may do so at this time.
I see none, no one here to speak on?
I move we adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.